I'll call the meeting to order of the Danby Select Board September 8th, 2022. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Abbott. Bender.
Here.
Fuller.
Present.
King.
Here.
Howard.
Here. Ms. Thompson, would you please read the procedure for remote access attendance?
Yes, I will. Remote access to select board meetings while not required by law is offered in order to encourage access and participation for as many of our town's citizens as possible. It is understood that a select board meeting is a meeting open to the public, but not a public meeting per se. Business is conducted in votes or chaos by board members. Therefore, public comment offered outside the public comment period must be made only by recognition of the chair. To maintain order as well as the efficiency of the meeting, the following operational standards for remote participants will be required. One, remote participants will be muted by online hosts upon joining the meeting, remaining so unless recognized to speak. Two, intention or desire to speak in order to comment or ask questions will be indicated by use of the hand raising function of the remote platform. Three, people will be recognized in the order in which the hand raising function is activated. Online hosts will alert the chair to the presence of remote questions and comments. Four, remote participants, when recognized, will unmute their device and identify themselves with clearly spoken first and last name. Five, comment or question will be limited to two to three minutes, after which participant will remute themselves. Six, general ground rules concerning decorum remain the same as that which is effective of citizens, guests, and board members attending in person, namely, the speaker will not be interrupted and will not interrupt other speakers. The speaker will treat the proceedings and other speakers with dignity and respect, addressing the issue and not personalities. Procedures for the use of the online platform and the above standards will be renewed at the beginning of each meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have still one more addition to the agenda. And that would be under new business to add 43 Timothy Road. Are there any other additions or deletions that should be made to the agenda?
Are we going to want to put that down as going into executive session or just that we're going to discuss it anyway, so?
I feel that if you think it's a good idea for executive session, then we should do that.
Yeah.
Okay, so we are going under the road commissioners' report. The third item down where it says road foreman position to add that there will be an executive session.
And also may I ask that the chair read the other items of new business?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Yep. So the other items of new business that came in prior after the agenda was printed was the signing of the no appeals pending on the grand list. And the next item is the approval of part-time employment for select board members. And the other item is the Rutland Regional Planning Commission Service Agreement for Local Hazard Mitigation Plan Amendment Number Two to be signed, which extends the time period for this work to be done. And just in case there were questions about what the part-time employment for select board members is, we've been informed by our insurance company that unless someone is considered an employee of the town of Danby and they are hurt on the town property, they are not covered by workman's compensation. So many of our select board members volunteer to do things around here and without having those applications on file, it would disqualify us from the benefits afforded by the insurance company. Okay, I will entertain a motion to set the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Motion is made, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion is made and seconded. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
King.
Yes.
Bender.
Yes.
Fuller.
Yes.
Howard.
Yes.
Okay, next we move on to public comment. Any hands raised?
I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, I don't see any hands raised.
Wait, wait, wait. There's one. It's Annette. Okay, Annette.
So I have a question, and that is, I didn't hear the number that you said, was it 43 Timothy Road?
Yes.
And I want to thank you for identifying the new and old business at the beginning of the meeting, that's very helpful.
Okay. You are very welcome. Is there any other public comment? Okay, we'll close the public comment section of the meeting and move on to adopting the minutes of the select board meeting of August 11th, 2022.
I'll make the motion, we adopt them.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any corrections or deletions to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried unanimously. We had next on the agenda, a planning commission report regarding the Danby resolution for a local cannabis control commission. I do not see Shelley here. Dreya, do you have any input on that?
Did Samantha give you that sample? Yeah, and the only thing from us which was stated prior was that were our recommendations that this one could be our local cannabis commission. Not really a whole lot of power to choose with that.
Well, I think we should like have it anyways.
Well, that way you can control who has it what.
Well, that's up for, that's.
Well, I was told that.
Yeah, like a liquor license, you would think so.
It would just allow for conversation. So if we had a board, if somebody in the town of Danby was applying for any of the licenses, then the board would just be notified, so then they could have a conversation about it. The state is approving and denying everything.
I think it wouldn't be that hard to set it, I mean, just make a motion.
No, Samantha had provided a sample document.
Right, she provided a sample document last month and.
And it's like down the line, if the state does give more power to the towns, if it's already established.
Yeah, but I think we should do it sooner than later.
Yeah.
Right. So I am willing to read this, and if someone wishes to make a motion and it's seconded, we can.
Yeah.
Adopt this. Okay, so we have a document titled Danby Resolution for a Local Cannabis Control Commission, whereas Title VII, Chapter 33 of the Vermont State Statutes was amended in 2020 to provide for the safe, equitable, and effective regulation of adult-use cannabis. And whereas 7 VSA subsection 863B provides that a municipality that hosts any cannabis establishment may choose to establish a cannabis control commission. And whereas a local control commission may issue and administer local control licenses for cannabis establishment within the municipality. And whereas the commission may condition the issuance of a local control license upon compliance with any bylaw adopted pursuant to 24 VSA subsection 4414, or ordinance regulating signs or public nuisances adopted pursuant to 24 VSA subsection 2291. And whereas the local control commission may suspend or revoke a local control license for a violation of any condition placed upon the license pursuant to 7 VSA subsection 863B. And whereas prior to issuing a cannabis establishment license, the state cannabis control board must ensure that an applicant has obtained a local control license if a municipality has established a local control commission. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Danby Select Board has voted affirmatively to form a local cannabis control commission effective as of the date of this resolution. Be it further resolved that the local commission will be comprised of the members of the Danby Select Board. Be it further resolved that the local cannabis control commission of the town will, A, review information provided by the state cannabis control board, B, review information provided by applicants for the approval or denial of a local control license, C, will communicate approval, denial, or conditions placed upon the local control license to licensees and to the state cannabis control board, and D, comply with the provisions of 7 VSA subsection 863 and the Cannabis Control Board Rule 2.14. Someone would like to move that resolution?
I'll make a motion that we adopt that resolution.
Motion to adopt the resolution has been made, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Dreya can sort it out. Motion has been made and seconded, is there discussion on the motion?
So now that we've adopted it.
Well, we haven't yet.
Well, once that's adopted, they will have to come to us, just like a liquor license is what I'm under the assumption of.
Yes.
Okay.
And then obviously, we may want to, at some point soon, discuss some bylaws of anything, or at least bring it up for discussion.
Perhaps.
Is there a generic bylaws that has come out with this, or?
I would say that this is the.
Yeah, but like Kenny's probably, I'm not seeing what the states are yet, but obviously we don't want them setting up next to our school, we don't want them setting.
Some of them are just.
Yes, but then.
And if we had a further zoning in town, then we could.
Great.
Just when Samantha presented that stuff, you read through some information to provide.
Could you speak up so that people remotely can hear you too? Thank you.
You know, basically, without subdivision zoning, we don't, you can't just pass certain bylaws or ordinances that say we love the cannabis. And the state clearly lays out what the town can and can't do. So we just, there's a pack, I think she sent it around, 43, and it's very specific from the states to what you can and can't do. Basically, the big benefit to the town is you are aware of who's coming, who's applying, if you choose not to do this, then you don't really even know whether you're applying and who's setting up until it's over.
Other discussion? Okay, clerk, would you call the roll?
King.
Yes.
Bender.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Okay, I will pass this around for you all to sign. Next, we have the treasurer's report. Our treasurer could not be with us tonight due to a family obligation. She did, however, provide notes to you, and you should have these notes. She said if anybody has any questions on the notes, we could call her. Take a moment and review those. Okay, any questions for the treasurer that need to call her? Okay. That's been taken care of. Motion. The next item would be to set a date for hearing and site inspection of Town Highway 11, which is also known as Shortcut Road.
And that is to reclassify?
That is to reclassify it. The motion would read, notice of hearing and site inspection, the select board, Town of Danby gives notice to owners or persons interested in lands and rights that may be affected by a decision of the select board to reclassify from Class 3 to Class 4 Shortcut Road, Town Highway 11, and its entire length from Lily Hill Road, Town Highway 5, to Danby Paulette Road, Town Highway 1. The select board will meet at the intersection of Shortcut Road and Lily Hill Road at a certain time and a certain date to inspect Shortcut Road and thereafter meet at the Danby Town Office at 130 Brook Road at approximately set time to conduct a hearing and receive testimony on the question of reclassifying Shortcut Road. As required by 19 VSA subsection 709, 30 days' notice of this site inspection and hearing is being provided by certified mail to each of the persons owning or interested in lands through which this highway may pass or abut, and to the Danby Planning Commission. A copy will be posted in the office of the Danby Town Clerk and published in the Vermont News Guide not less than 10 days before the set time of the hearing. So it would have to be 30 days from now, at a minimum.
Sooner than October 10th then, right?
Correct.
Is October 10th a Monday or a Sunday?
Monday.
It's a Monday.
Monday.
Formerly Columbus Day.
Ah.
I mind it's still Columbus Day, but.
So does Monday, the 10th work?
Works for me.
Works for me, if we can do it tomorrow.
Yeah.
Good. I would say go with that.
Okay, so we will go at what time?
Jack.
How about 5:30?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's dark right then now by October 10th, so we.
Yeah.
Eight?
Eight, nine, somewhere in there. We have to consider not only ourselves, but you know, other people that contiguous landowners that might sleep a little later than we do.
Most people I know are up early, so.
What, you want to go with nine is what you're thinking?
Yeah.
Eight or nine, whatever you guys want to do. Which will it be?
I'll split it, I will go to 8:30.
Yeah. Okay. So the select board will meet at the intersection of Lily Hill Road at 8:30 a.m. on Monday, October 10th. 10:10, 22, to inspect and then return to the Danby Town Office to conduct a hearing at what time? 9:30?
Sounds good, yeah.
Okay. Would someone care to make a motion to post this notice?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Motion is made and seconded. Clerk, would you call the roll?
King.
Yes.
Bender.
Yes.
Fuller.
Yes.
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 Okay, so motion has carried. So we're going to date this at Danby, the 8th day of September.
Do you want that notice written for the other members?
Not necessarily. I will send that around to be signed. The next item on the agenda under the road commissioners' report is the issue of the drainage on Depot Street. And Tom asked me to help out with that. As you know, it's his busy season. So I contacted the hydrogeologist that Annette Smith recommended, who did all that good work for Amia David Adelman. And I had quite an interesting conversation with him, but he feels that his company is too large to do us justice, and it would be rather expensive. So he recommended a different company, which is a little closer to us, it's in New Hampshire. And the fellow's name that I spoke with there is Russell Abell, he's a senior vice president. And they are interested in the project. What they would do is complete a review of publicly available information to understand regional and local hydrogeology focused on Danby Town Center. They would obtain and complete a review of historical documents, which would include water courses and conveyances in the town, including the history of installation of subsurface utilities and other related changes in town, including the building of New Route 7. They would perform a site visit to the area. And they would present a summary of initial findings, including development of a conceptual site model, hypothesis of what may be the cause of basement flooding, and proposed next steps to be presented to the select board in a regular select board meeting in person. So he feels that based on the discussion I had with him discussing the issues that go on there, that the estimated cost to complete these planning, these planning purposes would be approximately $10,000. So the question is, do we wish to proceed with that?
Well, I think he's definitely going in a direction that we wanted to go with because the other quote, I was concerned, we weren't actually dealing with the hydrogeology of the area. And I think it's probably, it's probably the next step, because like all the work that you guys have done down there and, you know, in the past we've done, we've never gone quite to this scale.
Right. There, there's a lot to this. He explained things like the concept of dropping water, which I never heard of before. But as we know, water seeks the easiest course. And if something has happened along the way, like for instance, the building of New Route 7, that's kind of created the dam across the swamp, so the water seeks a new course. There's issues that he talked about, like in the city of Boston, where a lot of pilings were put in the ground, it causes water to seek a different course. So they would do this kind of exploration.
I think it's a reasonable estimate if he's going to give us actual, some decent information. And we do have to figure something out eventually with that. Mount Tabor's probably not interested in helping.
Well, I certainly want to talk with them and, you know, a number of the houses that are affected are in Mount Tabor.
Yeah, the water flows through Mount Tabor from Danby.
Yeah, no, and but the thing is, I'd like to get them on board with us with this project because it could, you know, obviously, 50% of that road is theirs, so. I like, I think he's covering the scope of work we're looking for, but I still would like to get the town of Mount Tabor to talk to us before we hire.
Right, and this is, this, I would not be entertaining a motion, I mean, I don't have a contract in front of me.
Right.
So I'm not asking for a motion to sign a contract at this point. I'm just asking the board for authorization to proceed to meet with this gentleman and, you know, let him, he needs to see for himself what's going on, and then he would present us a contract, which he feels would be approximately $10,000.
Okay, but then again, I would like to involve the town of Mount Tabor.
Yep.
As our next step then.
And if I can set up an appointment with him, I will see if.
Right, if we, yeah.
Or we'll try and set up an appointment that's mutually agreeable to representatives of Mount Tabor and ourselves. Whoever on the boards would like to be part of this.
Has Mount Tabor's board mentioned anything that this is an issue that they've looked at too? Or are they just blowing it off? Or does anybody?
I mean, they've been part of, because I've done work for them in the past down there, trying to open up what we thought was the drains and stuff down there.
Right.
So, I mean, they're aware of it as well. But nobody's wanted to really do anything more than tell everybody they feel bad for the basements flooding and, you know, and we've all made valid attempts, it's just.
And I had another complaint the other day from Mark McClellan, that he's spent a lot of money on the furnace in his house there. And when we had that rainy vent a week ago or so, again, his basement flooded, the water was coming three feet up out of the ground from the broken pipe. So this needs to be addressed.
I would say, next step, let's get Mount Tabor involved and then move forward with meeting with this guy.
Okay, so I'd like then a motion to, I'm willing to do this, like the fool that I am as a volunteer, to meet with him and invite perhaps Phil Lidstone from Mount Tabor. and invite perhaps Phil Lidstone from Mount Tabor.
Or at least let the board know and let them send who they want, yeah. Cause Mark may wanna participate in it.
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion to involve Mount Tabor in our research and direction that we're going to go and have their input along with us.
And I guess my thing, not to cut your motion off though, is we may wanna discuss it if they want no part of it at all.
Yeah.
I, I, I think that's kind of the thing I've been saying is we're.
Contact Mount Tabor, we, it's not gonna cost them anything for that guy to come over, and if Mount Tabor doesn't wanna meet with him, we should probably meet with him anyways, and then we can
Right.
discuss, further discuss it.
Yeah. No, and I would.
It's in the discussion stage at this point, and that's the way it began.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I think we can definitely move forward.
Is there a second to?
I'll second it.
Motion? Clerk, would you call the roll?
Haynes.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Fuller.
Yes.
Howard.
Yes.
Abbott.
Yes.
And I have a hand raised from Annette Smith, but now it's not. Um, Annette, did you wanna speak?
Is that okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think the timing is right now, okay, go ahead.
I don't know him, but he looks very, he looks just like, you know, the person. And he's also a geologist, so.
He also does work for Amia.
He, it looks like he might find this to be really interesting. So, I'm glad that you're getting forward with it, and I would, are people on Mount Tabor Avenue in Mount Tabor? I mean, if they have flooded basements, I would think that that would be a way to.
Roughly half of them are.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, do I hear a motion for executive session?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll make it.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor of entering executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, you'll note that we are back out of executive session. I know, if they could all go that quick, I'd be a happy chairperson. Uh, okay, so Tom, if you'd like to continue with your report?
Yep, um, well, I'd like to make a motion that we, um, hire Steve Haynes, who thankfully has applied for the road foreman job that has been posted for three years?
Three years.
Three or four years now. Um, and, um, I'm very happy that someone with his abilities and skills, um, applied for this job.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, is there any discussion? All those are, uh, let's pull the board.
Haynes.
Used.
Carter.
Yes.
Fuller.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, congratulations.
Congratulations, Steve.
Yes, congratulations.
Uh, hope we're all happy with this choice.
You're happy.
Ninety days, if you don't like me.
Four of us are very happy. We have, um, been given policies that are recommended by the Vermont League of Cities and Towns regarding risk management and exposure to releases of hazardous energy. Did you give us that?
Because you didn't have to.
Oh, this is the risk map?
Sorry.
No, no.
And what do you want us to do with that?
Um, I guess at this.
I'd say we post it for the town crew to make sure they're well aware of it.
Well, I mean. VLCT wants us to adopt a policy. So, we need to take a look at that and, um, officially have a policy so that if somebody does not abide by the policy.
Is this a policy that they sent us down that they want us?
I believe there's, yeah, I think you.
Gable rest till October, so we all have a chance.
Yeah, I, I guess I would like to read it and, and make notes on it.
Enough pages there, I don't wanna.
Oh, there's a lot.
Second.
And then they want.
Looks some like.
They want also a policy on highway maintenance by contractors. It's not enough.
We don't use subs, but.
Well, if we have, for instance.
Highway maintenance.
Or for guard rail.
Okay. So, the town's never had a policy on that?
Okay, so, um, we'll just state for the record that these samples will be supplied to the select board members and the, um, road foreman for review. And, um, discussed at the October meeting.
Yep.
Okay, next you have FEMA. Your FEMA risk map?
Uh, let's look, this is about.
Yep. Anyone wanna go to that meeting?
It's online.
If you got time.
I don't know if I'll have time that week.
We'll let Steve look at it, he may have time.
Okay.
I'll move on to the order tomorrow.
Nope. Not tomorrow.
Well.
You have a preferred starting date, Steve?
It was on my application, but.
Okay.
Seventeenth of October is would be the, about the earliest, cause I've got to finish doing fieldwork.
Yep. Okay.
Unless, my plan is, and I don't know if I can find out from Janice tomorrow or not, but I figured I would, uh, do the drug test as soon as possible, and then if we had a storm or whatever, whether it be wind or snow, then I would be available to come in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Guess I know that's one of the things that is usually in the motion, it says.
Ending the drug test.
Can you, uh, send me a copy of that FEMA thing, if I'm free that day, I will try to go online, but I can't guarantee it.
Yeah, we can make you one before we leave this evening. Okay, so next in this pile of business to complete tonight is to award a heat pump bid. And I've contacted, um, four or five different businesses about heat pumps, and only two of them sent back bids. One is Phelps Plumbing and Heating in Rutland, and the other is Looson Plumbing and Heating in Wallingford. Um, I don't know if you want me to pass these around or what, but, um, the Phelps bid came in at thirteen thousand seven hundred seventy-four dollars and sixty cents. And the Looson bid came in at nine thousand three hundred and fifty dollars.
Now, you contacted the one I had given you, and he didn't wanna.
And it's not that he didn't want to, but when he saw the stone walls, he said to me, you need to arrange for someone to drill holes in the walls, and I said, no, you need to hire a subcontractor and put it in your bid, um, to drill the holes where you want them, I'm not getting in the middle of that.
Did you travel my comfort out of Dana?
Hmm, no, nobody.
He did mine, he was super guy, he was very. What I liked about him was he came right down the month, he gave us a bid. He showed up exactly when he said he would.
Well, we had, um, this fellow, um, I don't remember all the names now, there were two other people that were recommended by, um, FW Webb, who basically supplies the heat pumps. I think the difference in the bids is, um, Looson is going to put them out the side of the building, whereas Phelps was going to put them out the back of the building, so they're not on the gable ends, and he was going to build little dog houses over them so that the ice and snow sliding off the roof didn't take them out.
And where was Bill planning on putting them?
I think it'd be better to have them on the gable ends anyhow.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, it's not, you gotta put something over them.
Right, and that's not a guarantee.
No. What falls down comes back. Big piece of ice come back and smash it.
And so, so Looson did the work, um, the renovation here, he's familiar with the building.
Yeah.
Do you want to see it, Steve?
What's that?
I said, sorry about that.
So, do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion that we award it to Bill Looson.
Okay. I'll second it. Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yep.
That motion is carried. Uh, the next item for discussion is, um, forty-three Tinmouth Road. And I am pleased to tell you that the town took possession of that property on Tuesday. Um, we have a signed memorandum of understanding and a signed lease with the Danby Mount Tabor Volunteer Fire Department for, um, the portion of the land on which their, um, substation stands and some additional frontage. Um, and what I would like to discuss tonight is the, um, disposition of the contents of the house, which I've given you a list of, um, and see what you would like to do, um, in regard to that. I had an inquiry from June Green's daughter about the deck, and I told her that if she would, um, get me an offer on it for tonight's meeting, I would present it, but nothing has been. These items in question are new items, part of the house was renovated within the last probably two years or so. Um, some of the renovation was not completed, for instance, the tiling in the bathroom, which is why there's boxes of tile. But I believe our plan is to raise the house, so.
Well, I'm curious to know if the fire department could use the hot water heater as a hot air furnace?
Um, definitely the hot water unit. Um, I believe that the water tank and controls for the well would be something that we would be interested in moving to the station. Um, the furnace, uh, I'm not sure, that's a propane hot water or a hot air furnace?
It just says hot air furnace, I don't know if that's propane or not.
Hang on, I'm not positive on that.
I'm not positive on that, I mean, I can look into that.
Well, personally, uh, if the fire department can use any of these items, I'd like to see it go to the fire department before we offer it to anybody else, cause I think it would be better to donate it to them.
Can you guys use a Jacuzzi tub?
Yeah, we could sneak it somewhere. Um, what I could do is, um, get together with our guys and go through and make a list of what we could use and then bring it back to the board. If that's worked for you guys.
And then get your list together, how you're taking the house down?
Yep.
Well, you have the list, so you would just have to present it to them.
And I guess I would think anything that they can't use next door, we just put on the whatever you put your stuff on that you've been selling.
So, um, can we say that you will present this list at your meeting next Tuesday?
Yep.
And get back, and then we can advertise, um, bids, um.
Yeah, I will.
These other items.
I'll do that.
Okay.
All right.
That's all I have unless there's other questions about the property. Okay, next on the agenda, every year, the select board is required to sign a certificate amended, which is amended to the grand list or affixed to the grand list, um, that no appeals or suit is pending. So, the listers have held their grievances, um, nobody has appealed to the state, and, um, we'd like to finalize the grand list. So, um, if we can have a motion to sign the certificate of no appeals or suit pending.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, motion is passed unanimously, so I'll send this around for you to sign. And as I mentioned earlier, the Vermont League of Cities and Towns has become, um, very concerned about procedures regarding all aspects of insurance and has informed us that anyone who is even performing some task on a volunteer basis, if they are not listed as a part-time employee of the town, would not be covered by workman's compensation. So, for in, well, I don't even need to go into, for instance, there's, there's many things that the select board members volunteer to do around here. And, um, if we should fall off a stepladder or something, doing that and be injured, it would be on us, not the town. Um, so, they have said that, um, we need to approve part-time employment for any select board members that are interested in volunteering around here. And I have received applications, yours, I believe, is somewhere around here.
Yeah, I haven't had it.
So, I would entertain a motion, Steve has, just as you know, been hired as road foreman, so he doesn't need to do one. But I would entertain a motion to approve. But I would entertain a motion to approve the part-time employment of Ken Abbott, Mike Powers, Tom Fuller, and Brad Bender.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, so we got a motion made by Haynes, seconded by Powers. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that takes care of that. That's the ayes and crosses the thees. Now, somewhere around here. There it is. Um, as you know, we've been working on the hazard mitigation uh plan with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. And um there was a meeting, what, three weeks ago?
Two weeks.
Two weeks ago. And we have another one coming up, I believe, this coming Thursday.
Fifteenth, yep.
Um, these meetings have been duly noticed. And um Rutland Regional plans to finish their work with us by the end of the year. But um to do that, they need an extension of the contract. So they wish to amend the contract to um March first, twenty twenty-three. And if we could have a motion to authorize that.
I'll make a motion that we extend it to March of twenty-three.
Motion is made. Is there a second?
No second.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the amendment number two, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, motion is carried. So is there any other new business?
I did uh pick the trailer and the tank up today. And I will grab the tank from out here and switch the pump over and get it all set up. Bring it down.
Nice. Any other new business? Not hearing any. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make it.
Motion is made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.